Welcome to this Jefferson City News Tribune City Council Forum for candidates seeking the Ward Three position in the April 6th election. I'm Gary Castor, Managing Editor of the Jefferson City News Tribune and will serve as moderator of the forum. The forum is being conducted in a virtual format due to the pandemic. Prior to this forum, the candidates were given copies of the ground rules of the forum, which noted lengths of time given for opening and closing statements, as well as time allotments for responses to our questions. The questions for the forums were submitted by readers or staff members of the News Tribune. The questions were not shared with any candidate before the forum. The Ward Three race features two candidates, Mary Shantz and Scott Spencer. Mary Shantz was Executive Director of the Missouri Alliance for Home Care. She's a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission. She served on the Cycling Subcommittee of the city's Environmental Quality Committee, River City Habitat for Humanity, and the University of Missouri Coal County Extension. Scott Spencer served as a Jefferson City firefighter for 25 years and now works as an account specialist for Firehouse Design Studio, Inc. He's a leadership team member at Memorial Baptist Church and a former board member for Central Missouri Foster Care and Adoption Association. As we prepare to get started, I'll note that candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. As the forum progresses, each candidate will alternate answering the question first and will have two minutes to respond to the question. At the conclusion of the forum, they will have two minutes for a closing statement. So let's begin. The order by which we go is determined by ballot order. So Mary is first on the ballot, so she'll begin with the opening statement. We'll have two minutes, and you may do so now.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, and thank you to the News Tribune for offering this forum so a candidate to the Third Ward could hear Scott and I talk. I chose to move back to Jefferson City in the early 1980s as a single mother with my three children because Jefferson City is where I wanted to raise them. As a child, I lived in Ward Three and attended West School, and when I came back, I relocated into Ward Three. During those last 40 years, I've been very active in Jefferson City in civic and volunteer activities in support of the city and residents. You mentioned a few of them. I'm a longtime member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I've been on the River City Habitat for Humanity Board of Directors for probably close to 10 years. I started with them as a regular volunteer in the Restore. I helped build houses with the Tuesday Crew and have served on the board both as president and currently I'm serving actually as secretary. I'm one of the founding members and very excited to talk about a new 501(c)(3) nonprofit association in town called Jefferson City Hands Together, which is an organization dedicated to help people get out of the crippling debt of a payday loan. And that's a very new and exciting addition to Jefferson City's list of nonprofit organizations that help people. As you said, I'm a member of the Coal County Extension and was on the Bicycle Subcommittee and when we were working with Parks and Recs on the Greenways, on livable streets, the extension of biking paths in Jefferson City, as well as the Rent a Bike and Rent a Scooter Project. I'm also very pleased to be a reporter of books for the blind at Wolfner Library, and I am a dedicated CASA volunteer and have been for a long time. It's a very rewarding program. I have backyard chickens, which are fun and entertaining, and late in life, I decided to try to learn how to play the violin. So I play violin with a group of friends who get together to play music. So I think my two minutes are up, and I'll just end it there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Scott, what's your statement?
Well, I'd like to echo what Ms. Shantz had to say as far as thanking you as a Tribune for allowing us to voice our concerns and how we want to address issues within the Third Ward and the city as a whole. Again, my name's Scott Spencer. I was born and raised here in Jefferson City. I'm a retired firefighter with the Jefferson City Fire Department, retired as a captain. I had retired due to medical issues, some injuries that I wasn't really able to recoup from. I'm also a business owner with my wife with Firehouse Design Studio, Graphic Design. We're a marketing firm here in Jefferson City, been in business for 26 years. I've been a Third Ward resident for over 25 years, starting when we first got married, lived on Hazelton Drive, and then we moved to Bloomville Road where we currently reside. I enjoy volunteering with our youth group at Memorial Baptist Church where I've been a member for 25 years, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue my public service as the Third Ward Council Representative. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so let's get started with the questions. The first question, we'll start with Scott. What brought you to the decision to run and what do you hope to accomplish if you're elected?
Well, why I decided to run was I wanted to continue my public service to my community. I like addressing needs and concerns and solving issues of the Third Ward. Mainly, you know, as going door-to-door during this campaign, it seems to be consistent concerns of public safety, infrastructure, streets, and stormwater needs. I want to help develop a community that is growing and inviting for future generations so that families and businesses can grow and prosper, and I want to be a voice for the everyday citizen and business owner as well. So that was the main reasons why I wanted to continue in my public service and run for the city council.
Okay. Thank you. Mary, same question.
Okay. Thank you. You know, Jefferson City has a tradition of solid leadership, and I would like to be part of that leadership moving Jefferson City forward. I would like to work on all the issues, obviously, but I want to focus on some of the issues around economic development, public safety, and quality of life for everyone in Jefferson City. I think with economic development, we are just beginning to get to some very exciting times and some great growth periods for economic development. The MSP redevelopment project, the convention center, first time to have a hotel with the capacity to accommodate large expositions and sporting events. It's going to bring us in a new business and residential environment. All of these will help generate revenue, jobs, and economic development in the city. I'm also very encouraged and excited about Adrian's Island and the bicentennial bridge and the increased opportunities for tourism that that's going to bring along with the redevelopment. And I'm also very, very excited about what we can do downtown in our business core and with other businesses, areas around the city to enhance economic development, public safety. Again, this was another reason I wanted to run. I think that we have, I'm very concerned about four specific issues with public safety. Three of them, the city council seems to be addressing now, and I think that we're on a good start, and that is salaries for our police and fire, that is cameras for our police, body cameras, as well as communication equipment. So I'm excited about that, but one of the goals that I also have in addition to that is a strong community policing program because we know that community policing reduces crime, it improves neighborhoods, and it most importantly builds trust between the community and the police. So I'm excited about that. And quality of life, what better city is there to live in? We're a small river city in the middle of the country, in the middle of the state. We have a low cost of living here. We have so much going for us, and I think that we will have, we can have more in arts and entertainment, housing, transportation. Leadership is about hard decisions, and I think I can make hard decisions, and I think I have a vision for the future. I'm running because I think that what city council does matters.
Okay. Thank you. So Mary, what is going to be the biggest challenge you expect to face as a council member?
Well, I think funding is going to be the biggest challenge that we all face. I mean, everything costs money that we want to do. You know, I mean, I mentioned public safety as one of the biggest issues right now. We have a city council that is taking on the charge through our current sales tax and then through perhaps a new sales tax to look at some of the public funding for our public safety. We have good police and firemen here in Jefferson City. They work hard every day to keep us safe and to protect us, and I think we as a community owe it to them to give them the services that they need. So that's another one that is important. Infrastructure, roads, potholes, I mean, you can't go out knocking door-to-door, and I'm sure Scott would agree, without hearing about conditions of the road. So that's also a challenge that we're facing. Stormwater, you know, Jefferson City is always going to have stormwater problems because Jefferson City is hilly, we're on a river, our soil is impermeable in most of the core part of the city. So those things, we can't necessarily change. We can work on levees and dikes, but those things we're stuck with. But what we can do is we can look at new development and new ideas so that we put in designs in the future for buildings and roads that are going to mitigate and reduce stormwater problems in the future. So those, I think, are the biggest challenges, and I think that again, if you make a plan, you work on a plan, the plan has to be flexible because you have crises that come up that have to be dealt with, but I think those are the things that we're going to be working on.
Okay. Scott, same question.
Well, no matter the issue, there's a common denominator, whether those issues are stormwater, streets, public safety, public transportation, those kinds of issues, the common denominator is funding. And so how are we going to solve that issue of funding? And I think that's a big question. I think what we have to do is develop and increase our economic development footprint, and by partnering with the county and maybe even some other surrounding counties that we surround us with, we can do that. The city has to be a willing partner and embracing businesses into our community. We have to be an encourager of entrepreneurship, and we also want to encourage our current and local businesses to expand. So creating an environment that sends a message when we partner with the county that what's good for one is good for all. And I think we're making some inroads there. I think we have a good working relationship with the county commission, especially when it comes with partnering with projects that are good, also, as I said, for the city and for the county. So again, I think it's really having a strong economic development plan that is going to raise funding for all those issues that we face, not only today, but also for the future.
Okay. So you both have kind of outlined what some of the bigger needs are for the city, but let's talk specifically about Ward Three. So what do you believe the biggest need is in your ward specifically? And Scott will start with you.
Well, again, as I said earlier, going on, knocking on doors, you know, streets issues is a big issue, but also a lot of people say, public safety, crime. We've had a rash of crime in the last year and a half of people breaking into cars, and they would also like to see some more street lighting to help with crime detention. So, you know, Ward Three has areas that are aging, and if we don't get a hold of our infrastructure and have a systematic plan and we implement that plan, we don't want to get into the conditions like some that are in Ward One and Two that are in really total disrepair. So, you know, these are issues that are the same all over the city, and again, I can't reiterate enough, in order to address these issues, we have to increase our economic development to fund these issues.
Okay. Mary, same question.
Okay. So this is just for Ward Three.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, there's several projects that are on the books that are going to be funded, and they're there, which are important that we go ahead and get those done. I mean, we have the Norris, Norris Drive has a culvert that's out. We have Douglas, I think it's Davis and Douglas. There's a new stormwater project that needs to go on there. The pipes need to be lined on Allen Drive. Those are not sexy projects to talk about. They're infrastructure projects, but they're important and they need to be done. Ward Three has some unique opportunities, I think. One is the Sugar Baker property on West Main Street that's across from Memorial Park is going to soon be dedicated as an all-inclusive park. So that, I think, is something that is coming from Ward Three that's exciting. In addition to that, Ward Three is a little bit isolated in terms of alternative forms of transportation, meaning the Greenway and bike trails. The Parks and Recreation Department has done a good job of extending bike lanes on some of the streets, but I would like to see the Greenway be extended so that people can get from the River Bridge to Memorial Park and then eventually someday, perhaps even beyond, when they come to Memorial, then they'll also be able to get to the park that's at the Sugar Baker House. This will require some on-road, some off-road, Greenway probably, but I think that would be an exciting thing for us to do. And we have, we don't have, Scott's right, we don't have a lot of the problems that Ward Two has, for example, with infrastructure, core problems, and housing issues. However, I think we need to be careful in Ward Three that we don't allow some of our areas that have high rental, low owner occupied, high rental, become problem areas for us in the future where we start dealing with issues so that we have housing issues like we do in some of the other wards. Ward Three is fortunate, it's a great ward to live in.
Okay. Next question comes from a reader. There are many often conflicting opinions on city government priorities. If elected, what specific steps would you take to unite the community and the council around measures that work for everyone? So we'll start with Mary on this one.
Well, you know, I've been an observer of city council for a number of years, both in person and now virtually. And it's actually kind of surprising, it's not that often that a conflict actually gets all the way to city council. Most of the time, it seems to me that by the time an issue gets to city council, certainly by the time it's ready to be voted on, that the city council is usually of a like mind or close to a like mind. And I think that's a tribute to them because I think they do a lot of work in committees and on commissions behind the scenes to get things worked out, to make certain that they've brought everybody along. They give opportunities for people in the community to come, to talk to committees and commissions, to work out problems. So I think there's a lot of back and forth that goes on, which leads to less conflict. However, we all know that there are times when conflict does arise, and it has happened even recently. So, you know, I think what the process has been, and it's usually fairly successful, is that it's important that everyone has an opportunity for input. Usually, citizen input starts with commissions or committees, and then it goes from there to directly to the city council, but that there needs to be ample opportunity. I think if the public has an opportunity to have their voice and heard and listened to, that that goes a long way towards resolving conflict. I think the city council does a good job of listening and deliberating, asking questions, and coming to a resolution. But in the end, sometimes you have to make a decision and take a vote, and it's a hard vote to take. And that does happen. The majority vote wins, and we move on. And hopefully, because of the process that's been used in advance of the vote, there has been an opportunity for the community to be involved, for all the people on city council to feel like the process was fair, that the conclusion was just one and fair one that was arrived at.
Okay. Scott, same question.
Well, I think you have to work on the issues and build a consensus. You know, not only are you a representative of the ward that you're elected from, but you're also representing the city, and you have to balance that with, you know, what's good for your ward and what's good for the common good as a whole for the city. You know, I think the city can use, move a little in a better direction of credibility. I think when we do studies and we do evaluations and assessments, we need to use those instead of keep re-studying and reevaluating a certain situation or an issue. And then it seems like sometimes we do those to kind of get the answer that what we want. And as a former city employee, I saw that quite frequently, and it kind of is demoralizing in some aspects as an employee, and also it puts the city in a negative light in the sense that we can't get a sense of direction. And I think, you know, a recent issue is with the Clark and Dunklin Roundabout. You know, there was a significant amount of money that was developed and put into a study, and it seems, you know, from some residents that even that I've talked to, they felt like the rug was pulled from underneath them, and that money was redirected somewhere else. So, you know, again, it's a balancing act of, you know, fighting for the needs and the issues of your ward, but also with what's good for the rest of the city as a whole.
Next question comes from a reader. In 2013, Rand McNally judged Jefferson City to be a most beautiful small town in America, but today, many of our buildings are in dilapidated states, boarded up with porches crumbling, roofs tattered, broken brick walls. How should the city address these problems? Scott, we'll start with you.
Well, you know, having this issue, no matter the ward, it has a negative impact on our community as a whole. This issue doesn't really happen overnight either. It happens over time, and you have to, I think, really look at it and see what the root cause of that is. Is it a crime related? Are people just moving out because of that? Is it a lack of economic investment into those areas? So, you know, from a city council representative standpoint, I would like to look and have a discussion with our code enforcement or law department and ask them, hey, do you have the tools and the resources for the enforcement of the current city codes, or do we need to update the codes to address a lot of these issues? You know, we have a lot of buildings on a list that are scheduled for demolition, but we only have funding of $20,000. As it was stated in your newspaper, I believe, earlier this week, it's going to take over $800,000 to address this issue, and that list is getting longer every year. So, you know, I would propose, I would be an advocate of, maybe dipping into reserve fund balance and to deal with this issue and get some significant dollars in place and have, you know, an open bid process for companies to come in and bid the work for removing the updated list of those homes that need to be demolished. Again, having those kinds of buildings in a neighborhood does not foster a good rapport with the neighbors. It doesn't foster a willingness that, hey, I want to go live in that neighborhood. So there's things that we need to do, and we need to stop talking about it and just start putting some action and having our action mates for words.
Okay. Mary, same question.
Well, it's a shame to see any of our historic buildings or any of our city core or any housing dilapidate and fall into ruin. I think we need to work to continue what the city is doing now and enhance some of the programs. You know, code enforcement is probably the key on a great deal of this. Demolition by neglect is basically what we're talking about here in many cases, and I think that we need to, we need to never have what happened on Capitol Avenue happen again, where we have buildings and homes that get so far in disrepair that they have to be torn down. However, there are some tools that we have in Jefferson City, well, not just Jefferson City, but tools that are available to us. There are some community development block grant money that can be used in certain neighborhoods and by certain homeowners to do things like help with code renovations that are like in code violations, weatherization, down payment assistance for people who want to purchase homes. We have some not-for-profits here in town like the Historic City of Jefferson and others that are concerned and will work with people and are trying to restore many of these houses. There are community investment and neighborhood investment programs in the city where it's a voluntary tax, so sometimes neighborhoods get together and voluntarily tax themselves to do something that would be an improvement to that neighborhood or that area. The city plan, which is being developed now, the next 20-year plan, is calling for something called strategically monitored neighborhoods, which would take all the neighborhoods in the city and rate them as a one, a two, or a three, with threes being the most in need of help. That's based on the age of the building, the price and the density of the area. And if something like that were implemented, I think that would go a long way to preventing some of these houses from falling into disrepair. The city is currently doing something similar to that by, they're doing a process where they're driving around every street in the city and from the outside doing an assessment of the housing and what's going on, and then coming back and doing some prioritization. They've just begun this process, but it's been interesting what they've been able to identify. So I mean, I think we have some things that are going, that are going on. When a neighborhood goes up in value, when it goes up and has fewer homes that are falling down, and people reinvest into that community, property values go up, and then businesses and people who want to invest in that neighborhood increase.
Okay. Next question. Jefferson City has an affordable housing crisis. Most would agree. How can the city help address the issue of affordable housing, especially affordable rental housing? And we'll start with Mary.
Well, this is a problem. It's been a problem, and it'll probably continue to be, and of course, the tornado exacerbated that problem by the loss of over 150 homes. The city doesn't build houses, but the city, I think, has a role in creating the environment for affordable housing, all kinds of housing. We have a shortage of more than just affordable housing, by the way. But we have partnerships like River City Habitat for Humanity that we all are pretty familiar with, and that's been a partnership that's been going on since, actually, since River City. It's what's kind of started River City Habitat, and that's a good partnership, and they take on a lot of the burden. But River City Habitat cannot build a city out of an affordable housing crisis. There's a new project in town called Transformational Housing on Cherry Street. When that gets up and running, that's going to be a help. There are other not-for-profits that are working in this area, but it's going to require some code changes. It's going to require some kind of out-of-the-box thinking to get the kind of affordable housing, not just in one section of the city, but all around the city that we need. Rental issues kind of overlap with some of the things we've already been talking about in terms of dilapidated buildings and affordable housing. But right now, the, it may have been actually a year ago, the average rent in Jefferson City was $684 a month. That's pretty high. That requires a fairly significant income to be able to afford that. Recently, I think it's been a year now since the new program for rental inspection program has begun. It's a registration and exterior inspection of rental property. This has gone a long way in just one year for identifying problems in the rental area. For example, they had a 97% compliance rate when a code violation or problem was identified through this process. 97% of the landowners, the homeowners, landlords fixed the problem voluntarily. The 3%, which was about 125 houses, I believe, did not. However, so I know my two minutes are about up, so all I would like to say is, I think that the affordable housing and the rental housing is again, an issue where we need to bring the people who are involved, landlords, tenants, the not-for-profits, the city together, and figure what are the barriers, what are the problems, and come to a solution.
Okay. Scott, same question.
Yeah, affordable housing, this is not a singular issue in of itself. You know, there's contributors, contributors of this issue, you know, chronic poverty, job opportunities or lack thereof, or job training, again, lack thereof, public transportation, location of housing. Our community, like Ms. Shantz said, before the tornado was, excuse me, was already at a deficit, and after the tornado, it's been compounded. Serving on the Coal County, Miller County Long-Term Recovery Committee, our statistics showed that 70 to 80% of those homes that were destroyed were rental. So this is where we need to have our state, our county, nonprofit organizations, our faith-based group, our school board, address the problem. We have to come together around the table and make this a priority within our community. It kind of goes back to my philosophy in a sense that, you know, government alone can't solve this issue. The city alone cannot solve this issue. We have to have partners, but the city can take the lead in this and bringing those people together to solve this issue. It can be solved. We just have to be willing to think outside the box and be willing to work together to make this a priority.
Okay. Next question. We'll start with Scott. This came from a reader. At least twice, the city has spent six figures to commission studies on public transportation. Each time, the need for more days and hours of operation has been stressed, yet has never been instituted.
I think that figure would be pretty astronomical, but yeah, our public transportation, it has some But yeah, our public transportation, it has some deficiencies, obviously with a limited schedule. Our primary funding source comes from from the federal government. From what I understand, that funding is is maximized. So the only way to increase services is to either raise fares or to increase funding out of our current or future budgets. You know, unfortunately, the private sector market is not able to pick up the demand that that is currently needed because it's it's hard to compete with those fares that the public transportation is able to provide. So that is really, I think, our our ability is is just to raise fares. Within our budget.
Okay. Mary, same question.
Well, obviously, bus transportation is a vital service for those people who need it. It's interesting, only 4% of the people in Jefferson City actually ride the bus to work. Biking, livable streets, walking. And if we are, then we have to have access to those things and that would include the buses. You know, I I think Scott's right. I mean, it's a federally mostly funded through other sources. It does take raising fees or raising advertising rates for the advertising on the buses to if we were going to just do it under the status quo. I'm not certain what to say. Obviously, longer hours in the evenings or perhaps Saturday, changing the route somewhat might be some minor tweaks that we could do without much cost. I'm curious as to the business communities that hire significant numbers of people in terms of, do they have a reason to be interested in this issue? Would they be willing to come to the table as partners with the city to look at ways that they could encourage ridership, perhaps through the way they do their shifts or incentives for their employees? I mean, I think there might be a few ways to look at that, but I think we need to first answer the problem, the question, because it is it is a cost issue. Are we is this is this the priority we we want to take on and are we committed as a community to alternative forms of transportation?
Okay. Next question. We'll start with Mary. Comes from a reader who says, in perception and in practice, Lincoln University and Jefferson City's relationship is too often focused on division or a disconnection. How can the council foster a better connection between the city and LU?
Well, again, I think this is absolutely not a new problem. This has been a perception and a real problem as long as I'm aware of it. But I have some positive things to say because I think things are actually changing. The link was a wonderful example of city working with the university on a project that has turned out to be wildly successful. In addition to that, the Lincoln University Police Academy, I think, is going to be another inroad into relationships between the university and the community. The community park was a wonderful park. It upgraded that area and it's done a lot to improve the atmosphere, the livable atmosphere around Lincoln University. The farmer's market is another one. So I see a lot of positives on the horizon with the relationship between the city and the Lincoln and Lincoln University. Another idea which hasn't come isn't here yet, but I think that will help, for example, would be to work with Lincoln University on a heritage trail. There's a lot of talk about different heritage types of trails in the city. This could be one where we highlight the Lincoln University, many of the African American professors and and doctors and other people who lived in Jefferson City to have that be part of a trail. Not only would that be a tourist attraction, but I think it would, in addition to that, kind of work with the community and Lincoln together and be a way of drawing them together. Another idea is the Chamber of Commerce reported out, I think it was last year in their report, that workforce issues in Jefferson City are real. A lot of the businesses have have complained or at least identified a problem that they don't have the trained workforce that they need for the jobs that are available. And the city could sit down with Lincoln University and the Chamber of Commerce and businesses and say, what is it that we need to develop? What could Lincoln University do? I mean, we also have Lynn Tech, but Lincoln University is right here in town. I think we need to work with stakeholders on projects like that to incorporate Lincoln University into the day to day operations of Jefferson City. And I think it's very important that members of the city council and Lincoln University leadership work together on a regular basis, even if it's just having meetings regularly to talk about ways that they can cooperate.
All right. Scott, same question.
Well, Lincoln serves an important role in our community. And to see Lincoln potentially fail in our community is really not an option for me. Our community leader, there's community leaders, our business owners and nonprofit executive directors, they have a link to Lincoln. I mean, there's, I think our community would be surprised how many people within our community have a direct link to Lincoln University. Again, to echo Ms. Chan's positives, you know, the Lincoln Police Academy, I think, is an excellent opportunity to bring outside people to our community and for them to to explore the city, Jefferson City, and to explore Lincoln and what it has to offer. Communication, though, it's a two way street. And I think we are making progress in that area, but it can always be approved upon. And there's a there's a sector in our community also that that really supports LU athletics, whether it be football, baseball, softball, track. The women's track team alone are always in contention for championships and it's something that that is really never shared really well or communicated really well with the community other than through the sports page of our local newspaper. And I think there's ways that we can help promote those achievements by with highway signage or pole banners. And I think that would be a positive to to send a message that, you know, Lincoln University is a part of our community. It's part of the fabric and we we want to see them succeed because if they succeed, our community succeeds.
Okay. Next question. Scott, we'll start with you. So how would you rate the city's response to the pandemic? What did we do well? What could we have done better?
Well, from from a local perspective, I think we we did pretty good. The county health is the lead agency in this pandemic and I think they they did a good job. Their messaging was consistent. The recommended practices of wearing a mask, social distancing and hygiene have had a, I think, a positive impact. The city, I think, did some some things well as as well. They helped our downtown businesses, mainly our restaurants, to by waiving the parking fees to help with the curbside pickup. So when when the time is appropriate, I think we need to look at, you know, what went right and what went wrong and then make those necessary adjustments to prepare us for the next response in the future because I think there is a very good possibility we will continue to have these kinds of outbreaks. So when you have multiple agencies, and this is kind of within my wheelhouse of of being in public safety, working together has to be a coordinated effort. And that's that's why we have drills and exercises and and tabletops to prepare all these agencies that work hand in hand in this pandemic to prepare for such an event as this. So, you know, training with these multiple agencies, it fosters better communication and I think it has paid off positive in a positive way for our community. I'm very proud of our community and our response. You know, we we didn't, you know, have major shutdowns for businesses, which I think, you know, we we have to not only look at it from the public health standpoint, but our economic health as well for our community. And I think we balanced that very, very well. I'm proud of our county leaders and our city leaders in doing that.
All right. Thank you. Mary, same question.
Thank you. I think the mayor and the city council did a very good job of setting an example. They wore masks. They had their meetings held virtually. They encouraged the local businesses and supported them both financially as well as supported their efforts. And I think that the businesses did a good job. Most of the businesses complied. They they installed Plexiglas. They had mask mandates. They provided hand sanitizers and masks for the for their customers. Many of them actually instituted shopping hours for certain populations. I think that the business community and the city council did a good job and I think we owe them a thank you for doing so. I think that leading by example is is key to success. I do want to say there's one thing about the COVID response that I think is really going to be positive for all of us in the future. And I suspect this is probably going to be everywhere in the country, probably everybody in the world, and that is the positive aspects of virtual meetings. You know, we all complain we'd like to meet face to face and I and I agree. But one of the things that has happened, and I'm just going to talk now about the city, is they upgraded their equipment. Their ability to conduct virtual meetings has gone from what I might have given as a D to really a B plus, an A minus. They still have a few things to work out with their 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 technology. But what a benefit to the elderly, to people with disabilities. When I was a young mom at home with three kids, it would have been no way I could have participated in a city council meeting or listened to a debate about an issue that was going on. And with virtual meetings now becoming kind of a hybrid now, you can join for face to face or you can listen in hybrid. I think we're going to see a real benefit from this and I'm and I'm glad the city is continuing to offer this. I do think we need to do a better job of explaining of getting out to the public information about what meetings are coming up and keeping the citizen re informed about what the issues are so that they can participate. But I think that's been one of the pluses to the COVID response was.
This this uncertain time in their in their business. But I think what it also has done is also the state has realized that, you know, state government probably will change. We might not have the need for a lot of our state workforce to go back into office buildings. So that may open up a a flood of the market, if you will, of of available commercial property, which Jefferson City already had a lot of commercial property at its disposal already. So again, some of this outside of the box thinking, are can we, will we be able to adapt those properties and maybe address affordable housing for some of those properties? So I think, you know, when we have something that might be looked as a negative, what's great about America is that we always turn that around and make it a positive. And I, again, I'm I'm proud of our county and city government and our business community in adapting and overcoming on this this pandemic.
All right. Let's go to our next question. Mary, we'll start with you. This comes from a reader. The Parks Commission has approved the transfer of land, making up East Miller Park. Cemetery expansion plan.
Okay. Well, this is obviously not a Ward Two issue, but it's an issue that might come before the city council. And I've actually been paying quite a bit of attention to this, visiting with people that live in the neighborhood and other people that are involved in kind of the the whole discussion. You know, the Parks and Recs Department has a plan and in their plan, this park was slated to be upgraded. And as anybody that's driven by it knows, it needs desperately to be upgraded. The people in the community like this park and they use this park and would certainly use it a lot more if it's upgraded. The veterans would like to expand and need room to expand the cemetery. And I understand that, but we're talking about two acres, which is a very short time they're going to be needing more space to expand again. A better idea strikes me that maybe what we need to be doing for the veterans, which is a very legitimate need because we want the veterans to be able to be buried here in central Missouri, is to look outside the city limits for someplace where they might be able to get 20 or 30 acres and have adequate parking and have their needs met for a long time. However, if this issue comes before the city council, I will listen to the recommendations of the Parks and Recreation and to the committee, any committees that have had this, listen to the people in the community. Lots of things that we don't know is what would the alternative park be if we gave this one to the veterans? So there's a lot of issues that would potentially come before the city council. I think parks are very important in Jefferson City. 87% of the people that responded to a city survey said that the parks was a very high priority in their livability of Jefferson City. And we have some great parks. So I, the East Miller Park specifically, I think that it would be, at this point, we need to proceed with the Parks and Recs plan to upgrade this. However, I know it's kind of on on hold right now because we're waiting to hear back from the Veterans Administration. So depending on what that is, this issue may come before the city council.
Okay. Scott, same question.
Yeah, I I support it in concept and in theory. You know, like Ms. Chan said, there's some logistics that still need to be worked out and I think it will enhance our community and serve as a reminder for those that served our nation. And I think it would, it, our veterans, they don't ask for much. And I think this is something that we should provide them. And that's how I feel about it. You know, if if it comes before the council, it it will be a a tough decision based on the needs and the wants of of the ward and how that's going to impact impact the community.
Okay. Next question. We'll start with Scott. The city is finalizing a development agreement with a St. Louis based group to redevelop the approximately 30 acre Missouri State Penitentiary property into a multi use space centered around a hotel and a conference center. As a potential council member, what concerns do you have as the city negotiates this development
Well, first off, I think this project's going to enhance our community. I just think the process was flawed. I think our community should have developed a a vision and scope and specifications of the project ourselves. I I I don't like the the idea of having competing from different developers, different visions and scopes of of a project. I think we've we've had previous studies that could have been useful in helping with that vision ourselves. So again, I think the process was flawed. Whenever you can have a a vision and place that before bidders and developers, that helps you get a better, truer cost analysis of what that project is actually going to run versus having a project of apples and oranges. So my concern is that are these figures accurate? And again, I I would have liked to have gone with our local talent. And I think they they would have, they've been such a great partner in our community for many, many years, the farmers. And I think we missed an opportunity there to, because that, you know, we have a local group like that, a local firm, that has a ripple effect in our community and it keeps our jobs here, it keeps our our tax dollars here and it keeps reinvesting in our community. So but we're still a ways away from, I don't think any any movement has been made. I know that they've reallocated some dollars to get that road started for the for the MSP development site, which was, again, transferred from a project that was already studied and developed and proposed on the Clark and and Dunklin interchange there.
Okay. Mary, same question.
I'd like you to repeat the question, please.
As a potential council member, what concerns do you have as the city negotiates the development contract for this multi use space centered around a hotel and a conference center?
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make certain I had the right question. Well, I think it's it's kind of in three phases and I think that, you know, obviously there we have to, the the next two phases are a lot further down the road. But we have to make certain that the original goals of the of the project are met, keep our eye on this development. And I think that I don't really have a whole lot of of concerns about the project in terms of phase two and phase three, but I think we have an opportunity. terms of phase two and phase three, but I think we have an opportunity to look at some of the environmental issues that we could maybe for the first time bring to the forefront in Jefferson City. We've talked about, the city has talked about looking at some of the ways to gradually get into an envi, environmental initiatives, solar, green buildings and things like this. I think this MSP project, especially phase two and three, but possibly even some in phase one, would be a good starting place to begin stepping us up to an environmentally current system in Jefferson City. I'll give you an example. The DNR building here in Jeff City, that's a green building, costs the state of Missouri $0.81 per square foot for their energy costs. The normal state office building is $1.51. That's a huge savings for the state to have buildings like that. I think we, if the time is right for cities to begin to embrace some of the new environmental building codes and different things that they can do. And with the new developments, especially in phase two and three, with the new buildings and businesses and restaurants and, and housing, it might be an, an interesting time to look at this as the way we began to get Jefferson City in, into something like that. You know, I think the MSP project's going to be great for Jefferson City. I was very, very attuned to listening to the project as it, as it was developed originally with the state, the county and the city and coming up with the goals and the plans. I listened to the discussion over the contract, the contract was awarded. I think we need to move forward. It's going to be a big plus for Jefferson City.
Okay. Next question starts with Mary. "The council's exploring two sales tax proposals for the August ballot. One would be an extension of the city's capital sales tax, the other is a public safety sales tax. Would you support either of the taxes? Why or why not?"
Yes, I support both of those. The first one is the extension of the sales tax that's been going on now for a number of years. We're right now into phase G, the new one would be to fund H. This is a great opportunity to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars because what it is, it's a city-county, the county also has a sales tax. We have funded many, many projects out of the funding for this over the years, and it's makes sense that the city and the county would share on these expenses. Jefferson City is the largest part of Cole County. So I think that's, that's absolute, and the new Those raises because we haven't had the financing, we need to get that done, we need to get the communication equipment upgrades so that they can communicate between other law enforcement and other emergency agencies like the state and Lincoln and the county. We need to get them the best tools that they have, and we need to get the body cameras that the police want so that we have body cameras, we have in-car cameras as well as interview cameras. So I support that one also completely.
All right. Scott, same question.
Yeah, I support letting the voters decide. I support it personally. The capital improvement sales tax is the main tax that's used for, for infrastructure and to support and address those infrastructure needs. But I think we have to look at it in a bigger package that, you know, we could reallocate more funding of roads and stormwater if we remove Parks and Rec from capital improvement sales tax. And, and now's the time to have that discussion with, with sales tax H being proposed for in August. This is something I've been advocating for years. Under the current proposal of capital improvement sales tax, Parks and Rec is asking for $2.8 million. That's $560,000 a year. Those dollars can be used for streets, stormwater issues. So I think that's, that's a discussion that we really need to have because that was the intent all along from the Parks and Rec having that self-funded, dedicated sales tax that they receive yearly that generates $5.5 to $5.6 million a year. So that's a discussion worth having, like I said. The public safety tax, you know, that, that is a tax that is, needs to address our safety personnel retention for salaries. As a community, we invest in our public safety personnel with, with educating them. When we hire them, we educate them, we equip them, we train them. But this all takes money, and, and when we lose them to other agencies, we lose that investment. And then that investment is benefited from the other agencies that they go to. So that's not good for our community. Another cost that you, that you have a, would have a hard time putting a dollar figure on is losing our seasoned veteran experience safety personnel. So when you're, when you dial 911 and you have an emergency, you have a medical emergency or your house or your business is on fire, or you have a burglar alarm, or you have, or your police officers go to a domestic disturbance, you want those folks to be trained and seasoned, and we want those folks here to deal with those emergencies. So I support it. I've known the deficits and the deficiencies that we've had in our public safety departments for years, and I think this will help address those.
All right. Let's go to our closing statements. So Scott, you'll start, you'll have two minutes for your closing statement.
Well, again, I'd like to thank the New Tribune for this opportunity to, to let us voice our vision and how we will address issues. I've enjoyed going door-to-door and talking with people. I'm amazed by how much we are such a blended community as far as race and ethnic groups and, and age. We have such a great complement of our seniors and, and growing young couples who are, who are having their first children and their families are growing. This is just an exciting time, and I've just been humbled by this experience. But I think I can speak for Ms. Chance as well. The most important part of this process, whether she wins or I win, it's to get out and vote because if we have a good voter turnout from within the third ward or for all the city as a whole, that sends a message, an important message, that, that we are engaged, we are, we are concerned, we are committed to having a voice in the direction where our community needs to go for the next generation. So again, I've had a wonderful time. I've been blessed by having this opportunity, and I'm excited to see how, how this journey ends. So thank you.
All right. Mary, same question or statement?
Statement, thank you. Well, and again, like Scott, I really do appreciate this opportunity to share our ideas and get that out to the people. And the coverage that you give in the newspaper following is, is good too because not everybody will watch this. So thank you for doing that. And for people in Ward 3 that are listening to this, you know, if you have questions or if you have thoughts you want to share with me, I certainly would add to hear them. Please reach out to me. It's been a real privilege to run, and I've been honored to be able to go door-to-door and meet people in, in the third ward. It's been, I, Scott, I agree with Scott, it's been a very humbling experience. Jefferson City, I think, has been very fortunate because we have had leadership with vision and dedication to a purpose to create opportunities for Jefferson City and the people who live here, and I want to be a part of that in the future. I think my resume, both, both my career as well as my public service shows that I am dedicated, it shows my passion and commitment to Jefferson City. We do have challenges. We can meet those challenges together. We can create solutions together, and I hope that you will work, will elect me so that we can work together to move Jefferson City to the future, working together. I would appreciate your vote on April 6th.
All right. I want to thank both of the candidates for appearing in today's forum. Now through the April 6th election, we'll be asking, accepting questions for these candidates as well as others on the ballot. The questions may be emailed from readers to vote@newstrabune.com. In the ensuing three weeks, we'll be publishing answers to these questions as well as stories on all the contested races on the Jefferson City area ballots. Our coverage will culminate with a Reader's Guide on Sunday, April 4th. Our goal through these forums, stories and question and answer columns, is to help you, the voter, make an informed decision on April 6th. We encourage you to take advantage of the resources, share them with your friends and family, and then get out and vote. Again, candidates, I thank you for joining us today and wish you both well in the election.
Thank you.
Thank you.